All right, good morning, welcome everyone. We will call the council meeting order.
Any questions? It's called our meeting order.
You all please stand and rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody bow our hands, please. Hail to God, Father, we do thank you for allowing us to get together, Heavenly Father, for the council and commissioners meeting together, Heavenly Father. Father, just clear our minds and help us do much better for the county. Father, we thank you for Jesus. And Father, just go with us now and lead, guide, and direct us. Heavenly, we say that Jesus Christ is our Lord and our Savior.
All right, we'll start off this morning's meeting with welcome a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Gerald. Do you have a second?
Yes.
Okay, second from Preston. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda are tax abatements, a shed that's submitted from Tammy. Tammy, if you'd like to come forward. Again, these are from Jackson County RMC, and we do have two reports today.
Hello. There should be four tax abatements.
Okay, I see those two.
There's one for telemedia and Orange County as well. And then also Salem Hardwoods.
Okay.
Jackson County, Orange County, telemedia, law form actually just compliance abatements. We've had them, and we've just been approving them every year. Salem Hardwoods, that one was a 10-year abatement. It was for their lumber air-dry shed building, and it will be, that one will expire at 27. It was initially approved in '17. They are continuing to hire, they, I spoke to them, they're looking, they want to expand their business, they're trying to figure out ways to bring in different product. They actually, their parent company out of, I believe it's Michigan, has had some interest, so we've been talking a little bit here and there. So they, they're happy being in the county, they have no problem with hiring, and their employees, which was great to hear, they were paying them. So I say they look great to continue the abatement for. They're good for our county. Do you want to, are you going to do them all at once, or?
I think we can. We're doing them all at once, Michelle.
So Salem Hardwoods, they're doing great. And then Jackson County, Orange County, and telemedia are all utility abatements for their fiber installation. Jackson County did three phases. And again, all 10-year abatements, Orange County also 10-year abatements, and telemedia 10-year abatement. Telemedia was the most recent one. Again, they're all compliance, and they are all moving forward with their projects. So I say all four of them are doing what they need to do.
Any questions? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion for approval on the floor by Preston. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Rodale. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, thank you. Any other updates that you want to give us?
There is a legislative luncheon tonight at America Place in Jeffersonville. Aaron Helton's going to be speaking at Swoodland, Southern Indiana. So I'll be attending that, and also, we were approved our three ready grants for the county, one with the airport, one Lake Salinda, and one for Shelby Street Housing. They are, there's going to possibly, more than likely, be another round of ready funding. So when there is, we will definitely be involved in that. And that's about it. Just keep it up on the grants and the funding, and hopefully next month we'll have some more information for you on what we're working for, working on, that'll be a little bit more interesting. So I'll see you next month.
Tammy, for Ready 2.0, are we as a community talking about, I think we have a bird stuck in the, stuck in the box. For Ready 2.0, are we talking about projects that we could, new projects that we would submit?
Yes, they're, it's a little different this time, they're not going to be, from the IDC met last week, they came into our region for a quarterly meeting, and from what they're saying, they're not going to be project-based grants, they're going to be more grouped, like housing grant, workforce grant, things like that, that each region's going to go for, and then we would go to the region looking for money.
Yes.
So we wouldn't have to actually, the regions would be looking for projects from us, we will eventually be sending projects in. But yeah, so once we get more information, it hasn't been passed yet, it's getting close. So, yeah, so once that information comes up, we'll.
Okay, what I would love to see are some of the other parts of the county's represented in that. I know Salem had, you know, you and the mayor worked really closely together, and he had some projects. He can ask you if they came to us, like, that we submitted for them.
Okay.
None of them were chosen at the beginning.
Okay, well, it's good to know that, like, these communities are thinking about some of the other things, and that's something that may be really important, perhaps even with the Mountain South Trail, if there might be some thing.
And that's what I side up. Yeah, because they're a little anxious, especially Campbell'sburg, they're anxious with the Mountain South Trail coming through. And actually, I'll be at Pekin's meeting, and Campbell'sburg is next week. The, Pekin is, they had applied for, with the ready grant for their park, and they were not given that, so right now they are doing a fundraiser, not really a fundraiser, but they're asking for donations for their basketball court, so if anybody is interested in donating, we as the Washington County Economic Road Partnership donated a small amount, no amount's too small, so.
Kind of some additional funding opportunities for that, if you talk about.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, I just met with Jayden and Sherrod last week.
So the Lake Salinda grant, so what is that for? What are we doing about?
That was for, it's a new bath house, they're going to, if they're, oh geez. Thank you, I'm at least alive. It's a, it's a bath house that is going to have showers and bathrooms, and.
There's a tree, it's up.
Yeah. It's packing now, right over Keely. It's a, where the, when you go into Lake Salinda, that first shelter house, as you go to the bend, it's going to be right in that area. At the beginning, we were going to put it where the bathrooms are, but we decided to leave those there, paint them, pretty them up a little bit, and then have that additional bath house closer to the entrance. It's going to be shower stalls for men and women, each side, and then bathrooms, and they're going to have it locked in off-seasons. I don't have the city, there's some information, they're going to have to do a little bit of coordination with that to make sure that it's taken care of, but yeah, there's going to be showers and bathrooms. So there'll be two bathroom areas in Lake Salinda.
So who's using showers at?
They are.
There's no way of swimming or anything, is there?
The city got a grant from Duke Energy for electric, they're going to be putting camp sites in there.
Oh.
Yeah, so that was, and it's like, can they use campers and things like that, too? Or does it just have to be like tents?
Yeah, like primitive camping.
Okay.
Yeah, but there'll be electric hookups. So yeah, I don't have all the information on that. I know they're digging out the septic and everything to get that bath house going, so they're moving forward on it.
Any other questions for Tammy? Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda are additional appropriations. You should have those in your folder. Okay, we've got two additional appropriations, one for the Cune Bridge Fund, and the other for local roads and streets. Michelle, do you want to share any additional information about this?
The Cune Bridge, the $50,000, that would be.
No, I, okay, sorry, go ahead.
That's what she pointed out, Miss Lott, just a minute. The $50,000 out of the Cune Bridge will be used to cover the cost of the log jams we're cleaning up there about a month ago, we had a pretty severe flooding issue, and the cost is going to be pretty extensive. The local road and street, $20,000. Our bridge project came in $25,000 under budget, so I'm going to take $20,000 out of there and put with that 25,000 to go towards a mowing tractor that we were going to purchase. So it'll just sort of take the hurt off of us.
Any questions for Rick?
Does it take care of all our log jams right now?
That should. I mean, everything at this time is an estimate, because they can't give you a firm price until they get down in there and see what's hiding, but that should cover it.
Okay.
Perfect, with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the additional appropriations.
So moved.
Okay, I've got three, I'll take Bubba's. All right, so Bubba, I have a motion on the floor, a second from Gerald, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, Brad, if you'd like to come forward, and Rick, as Brad's coming forward, if you would talk a little bit about the history of the relationship that the county highway department has with Brad, that would be helpful, and Brad will be talking to us today about a BOT project, or really just the process of going through a build, operate, transfer project.
Sure, just to let everyone know how Brad fits in with the county, he's been working with the highway department for.
Would you mind coming up?
Oh boy, I was trying to talk loud.
Nice to meet you. I hate to sit by and bother you. Brad's been working with the highway department for about the last four years. If you'll recall, the Beth Mill Bridge project had drug out for eight, nine years, and Brad was very instrumental in getting that back on schedule and overseeing it. He oversaw construction on that project and made sure we were compliant with him on it. Also, he's helped us with our small structures. He's currently overseeing our county wide bridge inspection, and I have nothing but good things to say about Brad, he puts the county first and looks out for our best interest.
So right now, do we have an on-call contract with Brad as our engineer?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to thank Rick for the kind words. I will say that those words were earned. You guys are my number one interest, the way I approach all my clients. If you guys have a need, it's my job to be of service and fulfill your needs to the best of my ability. Today, we're here to discuss a little bit of the build, operate, and transfer process. I was able to procure some extra copies here, is there anyone, commissioners have provided them with a copy of this, is there anyone in the audience or the panel here today that would like to have a copy with some additional information on the BOT process? I do have some copies, so.
Several of the council members, I think we're on the audience, like one.
One, two, three, two. Could I give you duration, please?
Thank you, sir. The new process, it's important that we learn about it so we can raise it. Otherwise, we're just going along here to say so forth. They don't have a client to put this one together, presenting this.
So let's know if you have a question. Are you sure? Are you on your way?
It's okay.
Okay, should we?
What I want to explain to you guys today is build, operate, transfer. It is a new way, it's not just a new way that's hit Washington County, but it has hit several of the local government entities, as well as private entities throughout Southern Indiana. Apologize, your glasses are on the way. So the 500 today to let you guys know what I know about it, and kind of provide you guys with the information. I also have some guidelines here, if anyone would like to have, I'll give you copies as well, and see me for a little bit after the presentation, I'll be more happy to share those. The build, operate, transfer process, the statute is commonly known as the build, operate, transfer, or the BOT as everyone is referring to it as. Under this statute, governmental body enters into a public-private agreement with a development partner or operator to provide an identified service to the governmental body. The service can come in a variety of forms, typically a public facility or improvement, most municipalities, but IC 523 utilizes the statute as an alternative traditional processes for public capital improvements, design, bond, bid, and build. In a BOT project, the area where the improvements occur is leased to or otherwise under control of the operator during the construction period. Once the construction period is complete, it is then transferred back to the governmental body upon project conclusion, hence the term build, operate, transfer. BOT represents an alternative design, construction, financing process with many advantages to the governmental body. Again, we're trying to stress on the advantages, not on the governmental body, but the advantages in turn to the tax-paying citizens of Washington County. With the BOT, the proposed scope is provided at the front end of the project with RFP or RFQ. RFP is a request for proposals, and RFQ is a request for qualifications. Request for qualifications is a quality-based selection. You're trying to make a selection on your quote-unquote future developer that is going to provide you with the best service from the beginning of the project until everything is transferred back over to the governmental body. So it's very important that you have faith in whoever you choose for your developer to be. In a BOT project.
Would you also just clarify with proposal about cost as a consideration as opposed to request for qualifications?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And the RFP that she's referring to, as far as differentiation between RFP and RFQ, the RFP clearly states down a, or requests a financial contribution, if you will, necessarily a contribution, a financial proposal, from each one of the quote-unquote potential future developers. They have to provide a series of bonds to show that, number one, that they can facilitate this type of expenditure if selected by the county, and number two, a bond to show that they can certainly go forward with the construction immediately, providing the materials and procuring all the things that we need for the new highway department site. So that is the proposal. The RFQ, again, is a request for qualifications, that is basically usually based on a quality-based selection. Again, you're looking at the background of these people, you're looking at their past business dealings, whether they're in the community, out of the community, whether they're out of state, several people will show interest in the BOT. A lot of people are doing this in Jackson County. Jackson County just completed their new work release facility through a BOT process. There's many people that are skeptical of getting into that process because they simply did not know about it. It's new. We all throw caution to change, and I'm a high as well. So once we got out and got those people educated on that in the county as far as BOT process, got them more familiar with it, and the number one way of doing that is bringing to your attention the benefits to you guys as the governmental body and to the taxpayers. There's numerous benefits on it, why it's showing here in the near future and in the past of being so present, or excuse me, being so popular as far as a choice. So there's a lot of things that I'm going to share with you on that as far as what the benefits are, to make sure you guys all understand the benefits. BOT represents, again, represents a design, construction, financing process with many advantages to the governmental body. With the BOT, the project scope is provided at the front end with the RFP and RFQ, seeking firms interested in a public-private partnership to deliver a project or series of projects to the body. The RFP or RFQ must meet certain statutory criteria, and notice that the RFP and the Q must be published in accordance with the IC-5-3-1. That is, the handout there that I gave you, the attempt here today, it is outlined in there, that process in great detail, that's why I want to be sure to get that information to you. I'm starting for a 10-minute commentary here, but I want to go and send information home with you guys at your leisure, where you can dig into it and try to answer those questions that you may have. So if the material does not answer the questions you have, please, I encourage you, bring those questions forward, and we will get you the answers, proper answers. Following the selection of, after the RFP, the RFQ, which is, before that has to take place, you have to do an RFI, which is a request for information. Anybody who's interested in participating in the BOT can approach the courthouse or central location and obtain any type of information that's associated with the BOT process as proposed. And that process there will be basically requirements from the county, and what they would like to see in their facility, the improvements that must be made in the facility to meet the needs of the highway department, which are in the great need. Yes, Rick gets by, he has a great job, he's quickly operating his facility with the manpower he has and the equipment. So it addresses the needs, number one. Number two, it also addresses the timeline, it also addresses, in this case here, the preferred location by the governmental body for a tract of land as a proposed size, whether it be two to eight acres, whether it be four to eight acres, whether it be 20 acres, whatever your guys' choice may be to facilitate as far as property. The location of that property, whether there is utilities near, whether there is sewer and water near to hook up to the facility, all that has to be taken into account, it has to be somewhat made known in request of information for your potential developer due to BOT process. So it's very crucial that we get those guidelines taken care of from the word go through the RFI. Once the RFI is released and the information is available for a given period of time to meet the statute, we then go forward with the RFP process or the RFQ process, which would be the process of the selection of your guys' future developer for this project. And again, past experiences, past performances, current status, financial status and reports, all that there comes into play as far as your guys' comfort of a selection of a developer going forward. So it's just many aspects that does come into play that I want to encourage you guys to take into consideration. The design deal that passes through so into the BOT agreement, the firm, the governmental body, work hand-in-hand, to work hand-to-hand to arrive at a design that meets the needs of the governmental body at a guaranteed project budget, and that's it. Once we get a number signed to this, that number is set. Now, the good thing is, once that number's set, of course, the taxpayers and the governmental body has to provide for that funding to go forward with the project, yes. But the good news is through the BOT agreement, once you have that agreement done, any and all unexpected issues that are encountered through our construction, and trust me, I've been in construction now for 31 years, there's issues that come forth on every single construction project, either great or small, it doesn't matter, none of them are exempt. The good news through this is any of those unforeseen is automatically covered and becomes the liability and responsibility of your BOT that selects it as far as your developer. They take those risks into account, and they take those risks upon theirself. You get into this project and you start digging the footers for the, any necessary buildings or so on and so forth, and you hit rock, and it comes to where you have to do classified rock excavation, that's not on the county, that's not on this selected panel here, that is simply on the contractor, if he didn't do his homework. If he did not provide for that, they have to take that financial burden upon theirself without sticking their hand out and requesting another change order, which gets extensive in a hurry. My, my, just sir.
Automatic, that just, that just.
Automatic.
Make that away, we don't have to make sure that's included.
That's correct, sir. That is part of the BOT process. And while we're talking about some of the advantages, which is, as I put myself in you, you ladies and gentlemen, shoes, I want to hear, what's new? What is good for me? How's it good for the county, and how's it good to fit our taxpayers? We all get bellyaches, we all get melting and grounded, wouldn't it be great to have people coming here, pat you on the back, thinking, hey, you guys had our number one interest at hand, you guys took that interest at hand, and we as taxpayers appreciate that. You guys probably want to hold those meetings time and time again, once those compliments begin, and will make up for some of the times when you guys bear the burden. So with property structure, if there is evidence of sufficient public funds as repayment sources, BOT agreements can complete certain financing options. The project is only constructed when the design price and financing terms are all approved by the governmental body. Again, I want to stress that. The project is only constructed when the design price, financing terms, and all are approved by governmental body. I don't see that being an issue, but that is the three things as far as hurdles that you have to get over in order to be able to go to boots-on-the-ground construction. I do nothing to tell you guys that we are here in the first of April. Construction season's coming, time is of the essence, the reason why we're breaking this point on a lot of construction projects that I'm running here through Indiana Park and Transportation, as well as construction projects that I'm overseeing for other clients. Please understand that they are reporting anywhere from 16% to 20% inflation on construction costs of each and every construction job that's coming through right now. That's for several different reasons, supply is bad, steel is through the roof, concrete's uh, trucking is unbelievable, tri-axle trucks are paying $130 to $160 an hour for hauling. So we've got a lot of things here that the prices are up to what we're used to seeing here in the immediate past. My encouragement to you guys are, without only taking the BOT process under account for the benefits it can bring to the taxpayer payers, please understand that the times that we are all dealing with, whether it be at work or personally or professionally at home that we're dealt with today, things are up, prices are up. This time next year, any project that you would do, you can go ahead and put a 15% to 18% price tag on increase each and every year going forward. So I want to applaud the fact that the need, number one, is recognized for Rick and his men, and what he does for the county, and what the his men do for the county, but number two, the importance of the time. Time is of the essence. We're trying to use the BOT process to save money, and the only other thing we can do to help save money is be a good steward of the construction schedule, and trying to make good decisions on behalf of the county and for the taxpayers, but trying to save them more money all at the same time, instead of waiting for another year, two, three years down the road. But that price is just going to continue to pop. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, we are experiencing that. Prime example, we had a bridge go through bidding, end-up bidding in Jackson County, and it was slotted for $1 million. The lowest bid was $1.42 million, and the second lowest bid was a million dollars above, it was $2 million. They're blaming it on material costs, they're blaming it on inflation, they're blaming it on trucking, which all of you do your homework, they have a right to handle that on that nail, and they're dealing with it as well, and they're certainly going to pass that on. So again, I want to try to very much close in the BOT advantages. How are you guys advantaged by embracing this new process and going forward with it? Selection of the project team from design and construction under one contract, you guys have the ability to set your own course, you guys have the ability to make those choices of the governmental body representing Washington County, what's best for the county, what's best for the taxpayers going forward, and what's best as far as getting a, to construction, to a completed project, ready to transfer and then go straight into it, as far as you guys being the owner and operating it from the, from bits forward. Control of the design timeline, you guys are in trouble, that you guys are ship, everybody else is hired a screw-nick. So we want to understand that you guys are in trouble, you guys do not lose any control as far as the decision-making through this process. Oversight before your design elements are approvals, you guys have complete oversight, you guys have complete authority of all design elements and approvals. So I want to make sure that you feel secure about the advantages so you can help embrace the new process, because it's something that we're all dealing with, it's new to the majority of us, that you're going to continue to see in the future. No cost, low-cost scoping period. Again, that's no cost to you guys. Scoping, and everything comes out there, but in the end, your developer is responsible for those costs, whether they're passed on to him or not, you guys are not responsible for those, the developer is. No obligation to move forward with the project if you guys hit a barricade, or if you guys happen to hit a wall, which is not in the best interest of the county. I do not foresee any of that taking place. You guys are very organized down here, you guys understand the needs down here, and believe it or not, you guys stretch a dollar into, and not every local government has found the ability to do that, so I do want to applaud you guys as local government to be able to do that. I see Rick doing that each and every month on behalf of the highway department, taking a dollar and stretching it into two, it's a magic trick, but guess what? It's a magic trick that's working for the citizens of Washington County, and I want to commend each and every one of you guys on your efforts as you guys continue to do that going forward. Replicating the public process, ease of developing and approval documents. Again, this can be as easy or as difficult as what you choose to make, that's the other freedoms of the BOT, the build, operate, transfer agreement. You guys, if they have a wish list this long, and as long as you guys' budget can facilitate that wish list, it is the, it is the job of the developer to step up and weigh on your guys' needs hand and foot, no matter how great or how small, again, it falls into the developer's lap to make sure in the end that you guys are 100% satisfied. If you guys aren't 100% satisfied, the developer has to step up and make sure you are through his agreement before you guys will take it back over and begin to operate it, transfer it back to you guys, and then it goes your guys' operation. So there's, you know, there's a lot of areas here where you can tie money to it, as far as extras or so on and so forth, it all falls back in the lap of the developer. So that's, again, that's why you have to make sure you have a developer that has good funding, has good financing, can fall back on that, and they're taking a risk, but through proper planning, and through proper guidelines, and through proper communications with all governmental bodies, and all branches of the local government, we can minimize that, those risks, not only for the developer, but primarily for commissioners, council, and again, the tax-paying citizens. That's where we want to meditate right now, as far as our focus on making sure that that small group of people are facilitated in every aspect. small group of people are facilitated in every aspect. Expedient closing on financing. Some people have that, a full completion, some people drag this out, they can go, I've seen it drug out for much as three years, but in the handout I gave you guys there, there's information that clearly says that it can be done as quick as 30 days. I certainly recommend, once that time period is done, and there's quality assurance and the QCQA quality control, quality assurance taken care of, and you guys know that you got exactly what you got throughout the construction process, through an inspection process, and a representation of the local government. That's where you guys also have to say, well, do you ever want to be a team, you got an agreement, you've hired a developer, they know exactly what building, they know what the parking lot's there, they're supposed to be, but how do we know that we're getting exactly what we appropriated and paid for? That's where I come in. I have 18 years of experience, I have 31 years of experience of construction, and I absolutely understand the process inside and out, whether it be a building, whether it be plumbing, whether it be electric. I'm not going to be a complete genius or professional, but I did undertake a building in my own home, and it took 19 months to do so, and all the extra time that I had, but I had many, many people who have visited that to do it professionally for a living and said, wow, you've certainly got a handle on this. So I want to let you know that my, my experience doesn't end at the construction, at the bulldozer and the backhoe and the pipe and the bridges. It's extensive through homes, buildings, so on and so forth. So I would certainly want to represent you guys in every aspect, except if I was representing my own project. I have a tendency to live through my projects, if I'm assigned a project, I take it very, very seriously. And if it's, if it's your guys' dollar and I'm assigned that project, I'm sorry, but it becomes my dollar as well. And I want to be a great steward of that, because there's only so many dollars floating around in our local governments today. So that's very, very important as far as an aspect there, having a daily sense of control over the project once the construction process is over. Very low issuance costs, no D S R required, is another benefit. Guaranteed budget or maximum price, and again, this is why I want to, doing what I do, no change orders. Something comes up and it's unexpected, and it's unforeseen, oh my gosh, it's going to cost us $125,000 to hammer all this rock out, so we can get down to the elevation that we need to fill our footers in for buildings. I'm sorry, your developer has just assumed that liability, and he has to take that $225,000 pound which may be upon his own chin, and he does not come to you guys as the representatives of the local entity with his handout wanting more money. Once that process there starts during the construction process, you're pretty well locked in. As long as they can deem it necessary, they come back outside of the B O T process, you have to write checks all day long. It happens every day on our in and out projects, as long as within specification, and it is deemed necessary to go forward with the production of the project, you have to write the check. So this alleviates that. You guys are not at any additional expense other than what you signed on from at the very beginning, which again, at times like this, I want to stress, that is a huge benefit of the B O T process. And in closing, the project team assumes 100% of the construction risk, again, hand in hand with the change orders. The developer assumes 100% of any construction risk. Now, if you have a timeline you have to meet, and you have problems with supply and demand as far as getting materials, and a timeline still has to be met contractually, because we've all made an agreement to that, if they have to step outside of their circle, and outside of their producers, suppliers, and get materials at a higher cost to them, and they'll meet their deadline, it's no extra money out of any of you guys' pockets or the taxpayers' pockets. The developer took that on, but he submitted his request of qualifications to be selected for the developer's project. So right here, cut those two, cut us a couple reasons, and again, I want to, I want to pay, pay everybody's attention to this. Please understand, guaranteed budget or maximum price, no change orders. You won't hear that anywhere else in the field of construction except through a B O T. Project team assumes 100% of construction risk. So once it's done, the developer is hired, and a price is agreed to, financing and everything taken care of, everybody's agreeing with, and you guys belt the hammer, you say first day of construction, go. Other than the daily representation and the monitoring of the project, to make sure that you get what you're paying for quality-wise, when I say quality-wise, I mean concrete. If it costs $4,000 PSI concrete, we're not going to let you guys get a five bag mix. We're going to make sure you get a six bag mix, and we're going to make sure it's $4,000 PSI. If it costs a rebar two feet on center on your stem walls, really good buildings, you're going to get a rebar two foot on center. If you want a four bar or a five bar, four bar being a half inch rebar, five bar being a 5/8 inch rebar, however you guys want a scope is exactly the way you give it. But that is all handled in the scoping process. The scoping, and what the scoping process does is it clearly defines and aligns exactly what you guys as the owner are expecting to have on this project, and nothing's shy of it. As long as you have those details and the scoping, the specification, the developer has to adhere to those without question as per the agreement.
Hello, commissioners, do you have questions for Brad? Karen?
Um, you just mentioned that we did all the say and depict the design, but in the negatives that are listed here, it says somehow should the control of the governmental entity over the design of the project may be lost. Can you elaborate what would be lost for us?
Karen, can you move your mic closer to me?
Well, in this case, ma'am, to be honest with you, I can't see anything that would be lost for you guys, because once the, the deal is made, and you guys have representation each day, and you guys have a pretty high financing as far as when it comes back over for the transfer, you get the process, the financing to pay for to go forward with the operating of the business, other than during the construction process, part of representation, I cannot see where you guys will become, have a loss in getting a point of the process.
Oh, I could add a little bit where there might be...
Please, ma'am.
Yeah, some loss of control in terms of the design. It depends how the local community would structure the R F P and R F Q. So if, if you're asking if our county, for example, decides to have the developer come to this project with their architect, their engineer, and everybody that they have identified, if we want them to respond with a total package with their design team, we then go with the developer that has the best cohesive, you know, like cumulative group...
True.
...as opposed to us saying, okay, I want this architect, I want this engineer, I want this person, and hey, developer, you have to work with them. So we could do it either way, where we could ask for a developer to come together with a team that they have already worked with before, they work well with, or we could force the developer to work with whoever we choose as an architect and engineer. It can be done either way. I think developers are still interested in projects regardless if they have to work with their preferred design team or a different design team. And so there could be a loss of control there. If we've worked with an architect for a long period of time, we really like them, we might want to choose the architect and have the developer work with that architect. Otherwise, you're letting the developer make that choice. So, but then again, in this B O T process, we still have that choice, like we still have the ability to decide how we wanted to move forward. So that's very good to see a loss of design control.
Those are some good points. And what, what I want to stress is when you're looking for a developer, please look for a developer that has a team that has cohesiveness. Because if you tried to implement two or three or four different people and tried to assemble your own team, or makeshift assembly of your own team, what you get into there, you get into a bit of conflict, you get into people who's not used to working with one another, you lose that fluidity and that cohesiveness of everybody being able to, oh, I know how they work in the past, we work together, I know what he's doing. Everybody comes together, you get quicker, you get a better project, and you get less conflict. Conflict is one is the death of many good ideas. You know, everybody has a, a right to their opinion, but we have to make sure that we find a team or a developer going forward that has that cohesiveness, that can not only represent the cohesiveness, but show us in the, in the field physically that that cohesiveness goes forward working together to meet a completion date. A completion date of your choosing.
I would also say too, you know, if the county were to decide to move forward where the developer comes with, the design team with them, Brad represents us already, so Brad could double check the design, we have, you know, Rick can double check the design, we can make sure we have outside people checking, a third party checking to make sure that we're being made good. So those, those are some of those like safeguards that we can provide. If we don't want to go out and hire a specific engineer or architect, we want the developer to come with their own design team that works well together already, Brad and other people that we work with can come and double check to make sure that that design is meeting our needs too.
Sure.
And that's the same thing with legal too, you know, the development team would also have their own attorney, but that attorney is going to represent their interest in the project, which is why the county would want to have their own attorney representing the county's interest in the project. Joe, did you say you got a question?
It says here on, on the thing, it says, in reference to what you've talked about, prices going up, there's certain materials going up, I understand, I deal with that. So developer financing usually is a five to 10-year term, it says, with a balloon payment due of maturity, which will need to be refinanced and creates an interest rate risk. So at the end of this, parts are going up, what's the interest rate going to be?
That's, that's something, that's something, yes, sir, that's something that has to be determined and decided both about the process. I certainly would, you know, whether you're, then you're left, two options, you're left with the variable or fix, of course, there in financing.
And that can all be determined at a time.
Yes.
So those are agreements that...
Are your scope.
...you'd be, and the developer have those conversations, like will they hold the financing the entire time, and then it's moved to a lease payment during that five to 10-year period, and over that period of time, it's paid off? Or is it just a small amount that's paid over that five to 10-year period, and then the county take out a bond or some other financing to make a larger payment? So those are all things that can be worked out with the developer ahead of time.
It is mentioned there's, it's mentioned there's a five to 10-year, I believe that's just putting in there as an example, because I do know for the fact that the work was still there in Jackson County, we just lived here for three years, which would be certainly be outside of the realm of the five to 10 years. And that assists them, again, keeping the, the cost down over a period of five to 10 years. They went three years, bang, they're taking it back over, and then they'll be full owners, full operators going forward. So you pretty well, through the scoping process, anything that you want to deviate from, like five to 10 years, if you're comfortable with that, you can deviate that, and you can stipulate that in the scoping process that the developer would have to need, would have to need concerning financing. And that there comes the, is where the B O T offers a way for you guys to critique it, the way you guys want to see it, number one, number two, the way you guys are comfortable with it going forward, because if you're not comfortable, something, the chances going forward slimmed up.
And you, we'll have to, as a community, have to have the root payment source identified, so we'll have that conversation before we actually move into a B O T agreement with a developer. So the, one thing that, after the R F P and R F Q, there's that scoping period, which I stressed, I think, at the last meeting, that's where we really want to limit that period of time to design decisions. So like, how tall do we need it? How many buildings do we need? We don't want to be talking about, do I support the project or do I not support the project? Those are things that we'll want to work out ahead of time, so the scoping period is only design driven, because while, you know, Brad says the cost doesn't come to us, it does come to us. That amount of time that those develop, that development, development team spends during the scoping period will be part of the overall guaranteed maximum price. They will still get paid for their time. So that's something to know in the back of our mind. And in some cases, if you decide to not move forward after the scoping period, a development team will charge you that period of time. So that's something you can identify ahead of time, like, we don't want to pay for the scoping period unless the project moves forward. That could be in your R F P and R F Q, and developers can say, we won't charge you that period of time if you decide to not move forward. But they, they do always get paid, so I just want to stress that that period of time needs to be minimal and may, needs to be design decisions, not a development team coming and saying, this project is needed, and then us spending a lot of time trying to develop the need or really the consensus for the project.
Yeah, I have a wonderful comment, I thank you for those. The scoping process is the very important process, just like you're saying. That is where everything on your wish list is put into words, into contractual agreements as far as what you would like to see on the new side, as far as the buildings, the driveway, the whether it's going to be asphalt, whether it's going to be stone, whether you want the building to build 16 inches on center, 24 inches on center, all that information has to be scoped, and has to be detailed, because there's money attached to it. And that, if we can do that, then we automatically have gotten your guys and all your wish lists taken care of in the scoping period, and then it's on the developer to decide to number to that.
I have another question. It sounds to me like there's two points in this whole process where we're going to get an estimated price on the project. One, before we scope, and then two, after we've given our wish list through the scoping process, is that correct?
If we go forward with the R F P, we'll get a ballpark number, because that includes the price. If we go through with an R F Q, it doesn't include a price, so that would, that would depend on which method we would be going forward with. Now, things can change, and between that R F P to get to the guarantee maximum price, because during that scoping period, we could say, want the Taj Mahal, or we want the bare minimum. So that, that fluctuation can happen, as well as material costs. And I've seen in some projects, a project has been drug out long enough that the inflation costs now come into effect before you can even get a guaranteed maximum price. So that's why you'd want that scoping period to come short and sweet and only design driven, so that you're able to maximize the cost, and hopefully the cost is more comparable. If we went through an R F P, hopefully the cost would be more comparable.
As far as any outstanding permits or anything, as far as construction in a floodway, or filling in a floodway, or anything like that, that would certainly be eliminated, any of that would be eliminated as far as cost and for time allowance as well, through the scoping process of asking, you know, that basically that whatever parcel is solidified or obtained or provided by the developer, that it meets the fact that it's not in a floodway, it doesn't have any type of restrictions to you guys, it brings on liability or payments in the future as far as flood insurance or anything like that. So yes, it's, the scoping period is so very important, because it, it lists everything that you would come to your mind as far as, we, I would figure that, the buildings and the asphalt and stuff like that, that there's many other things in that scoping period that you have to make sure that you detail, because there is dollars assigned to that if it's requested in the scoping period.
Any other questions?
I have another one. Sorry. So can you give us an example of anyone who has come in under budget on one of these? And what happens to the money if it ever comes in under that guaranteed maximum price?
That is where it's so important, ma'am. As far as giving an example of that, being the newest process, I kind of give you an example of that, I'll be honest with you, if I can, you're going to be telling the truth from me regardless of what other people are hearing. As far as that part there goes, does it come in under? When it comes in under, that there is the flip side of that coin, when you've got a developer coming in that's willing to take on, hey, if we get out and start digging these footers, and we get rock, and we have to win rock classification, and we have $150,000 in to chip it out all these rocks for this here footage, they have to eat that. But the other side of that coin is, there is a small opportunity, and you can make that opportunity even minute, through your scoping process as far as providing the details. If they do come a little bit under, I would like to say this, we can be amenable about, and if so, do the process, and they pop it out. That is the chance they get.
I know the Ohio River Bridge project was part of a similar type of thing as a B O T. It wasn't exactly a B O T. I do know that parts of it came in under budget, and the taxpayers received no benefit from that whatsoever. So that has me a little bit skeptical of all B O Ts, if I'm being completely honest, because I know how much that potential under budget was, and it was pretty substantial, and it could have really benefited taxpayers, and that has me a little turned off by that. But I also see your other side too, that inflation is astronomical right now, and then that could end up being our benefit.
Understandably so, and that's a good point that you made. That's where they kind of black the B O Ts, processes eye here. We're talking about that being followed by a B O T, the problem is, is that's all based on toes, as we all know, as being, and then two, Kentucky, you get a little mail about 10, 12 days later. So there, it's kind of not necessarily an apple to apple, if you will, ma'am, it's kind of apple to a horde, and all of them are the same classification, and it has to be with that a bit differently.
Yep. And I understand that. I was saying that it is, it is a little bit different, and it is a type of B O T, yes.
But I can tell you, when you get this back of construction right here, the unforeseen, there's a lot of unforeseen, and to take those unforeseen on, and once they're encountered in the process, if you enter in with a contractor or a developer outside of the B O T process, then that becomes 100% your liability in your check. No questions asked.
Yeah, and it seems like with the B O T, the incentive is to come in under budget, because it's monetarily benefits the developer, whereas if they, we were moving forward with just a public funded project, there's really not an incentive to come in under budget, it's more of an incentive to come in over budget and have change orders.
Please understand, so that leaves your developer at the standpoint of you, that they plan on making their quote unquote money that they had planned, or their profit, percent of profit at the end of the project, they're going to have to dig in, they're going to have to seek out quality materials from producers and suppliers, where they can maybe get a little cheaper from Jim Ball down the road, instead of Andy on the left-hand side of the road, they have to go and work for you to make sure that it works. If they want to be in the slum and lack of days ago in the taking of supplies, so on and so forth, going forward, not worrying about cost, that's going to bite them in the hindsight at the end of the project. You guys don't have to worry about that anymore. You've been in the B O T agreement, all those risks, all those headaches, all those decision-making processes to make sure that the bottom line works in the end, is go over your guys' head. It's all being transferred and taken over by your developer. That is, I think, is the, in layman's terms, is the big attract to many of the local governments because we're all on budgets and we don't have money to do the things that we really want to do. We start a construction project and we hit something unforeseen and it costs $350,000 on top of the price tag we were agreed to. Oh my mercy, we're moving to $350,000. How many different departments is that going to affect as we draw funding for a little departments to cover this unforeseen? And when you operate on the type of budgets that we all do here in Southern Indiana, that certainly becomes a concern.
Yeah, and you know what? The guaranteed maximum price doesn't come in until later through the process. I would say as the funding body, you know, the financial fiscal body of the county, the council will want to know what's their top dollar amount that they would be willing to invest in a project because you'll want to, well, as a council will want to know that before we get to a guaranteed maximum price. Because if it comes in over or under whatever, you would just want to know that because we want to know that a project would be viable, that we could actually afford whatever project it is.
And that number would have to be assigned prior to the R F I. So your developer, potential developers with no coming in, okay, we have to be, we have to be able to provide balance for this amount maximum. So then you also know when you get submitted from a developer, they already know that they can meet that criteria financially for the overall expense as well as construction law and for the construction expense immediately. But that, that ballpark figure would have to be provided during that, that period, maybe you are correct. And then once a developer is determined and R F I is out and then the R F Q or the R F P goes out, once a developer is determined, then you start getting into the true specifications. Okay, you met our threshold, you meet all of our qualifications, this is exactly the product that we want. We need to decide a number two to come to agreement, that number, and then we can go forward immediately with the construction process.
Any other questions from the council?
I don't, I certainly don't pretend to know a lot about what's going on with projects like this.
Correct.
It appears that to be competitive, there should be enough developers out there do the bidding and make this competitive. Now, my question, since this is such a new method, if it is new, again.
Certainly it is.
Okay.
Correct.
Where would we, where would we go to find developers who have been a part of this project to better understand what their end result of the project would be?
Well, I, I thought myself in your shoes. I reached out to the attorney who was at charge of the work release facility representing Jackson County when they developed that up there. To my displeasure, I was not contacted because I wanted to ask the same questions that you just asked, sir. And unfortunately, being a new process, your resources as far as, as going to say, hey, how did it go for you? Was you able to save you money in the end? How's the process? What you recommend it? Those are very few. I went to the point, the extra step, I met with the commissioner of Jackson County who had made the decision to go forward with the work release facility and he said he's not sure that he would have done it any other way. For the simple fact is, and I'll be honest with you, a project like this calls for a lot of oversight. If you're going to go out and you're going to build this project yourself, a lot of oversight. If, if I went to build my house and I just went and I found every aspect of construction that had to be dealt with, I'm going to hire a subcontractor and I left and then I showed up a year and a half later and everybody was supposed to have done their job and done the oversight, chances are number one, I'm still going to be on the hook for the bill that I agreed to. Number two, I didn't have any oversight in the project. I understand to make sure it was done 100% correctly and to my liking. And number three, it's going to take longer than what it would if you guys had somebody oversight as far as setting your deadline. So it's a brand new process, sir. I would like to go and tell you that I haven't listened this long to few people to talk to, but I cannot do that because they're not there. The biggest part, and it's tricking down from Indian apples, please understand, they're doing it up there on large scale in Indian apples, but it's tricking down here and it's in our, it's in our backyard now. And it is a process to grasp. People at Jackson County was a little bit leery at first about, well, do we want to engage this? Do we want to go into this? Once they found out that the quote unquote developer was responsible for the funding as far as the money and everything, take it through construction and they wouldn't have to immediately pay the money, well, shoot. And that gave them, that gave them a two-year project or however long the project, the company took almost two years. That took them two years to work within county government, local government to find out where can we take money with our budget going forward? They give a two-year notice here. How can we appropriate going forward to take care of the B O T and get done with it? And it takes an immense amount of, if you don't pass on to the developer as far as you got the commissioner, you got the county council and all of you's doing a wonderful job with Washington County. It's going to take an immense amount of time and involvement going forward. And to be honest with you, the commissioner of Jackson County said, I didn't need all those headaches. I didn't need all those headaches compared to what I already do. What he was saying is, there's a process that's outlined to take all that away from me and not still get what we want in the end. Why not take the process all that was his day? That's the only gentleman I've been able to follow up with, tried to give you the information and truth with him for sure.
I mean, the whole idea, the whole process looks wonderful on paper.
Yes, sir.
But I like to, it would be nice to be having, it would be nice for the council to have a tracking record of what has happened in it.
Sure.
What is going on. We don't have that right now.
Yeah, and I would say, I think DuBois County is going through a jail B O T right now. And then Clarksville is using, they have some sort of road infrastructure, the town of Clarksville is doing a road infrastructure project with a B O T.
So it makes you like locally.
There is somebody, you know, not too far from us, but I would say, you know, a jail is going to be a lot more expensive. So there's going to be a lot more security and a lot more design considerations. So they might have some hiccups or things that are not going well that won't affect us. And then a road project is completely different too. But those are two relatively close by communities that are either in the process or about to go through the process of a B O T.
I have to be five years, but probably done a road, sir. I do believe I can provide you with a list of some people who have entertained the process in the past that came out on the other side and be more happy. Problem is, unless I approach someone like a public county commissioner or someone like that, when you go to a private developer, they can decide who they want to talk to you about it or not. You know, you knock on that door and even though you're trying to be a gentleman and you're trying to inquire for all the right reasons, you would want to talk to whoever pays bill. Yes, sir. Exactly right. Which in this, in this case, as far as construction arena would be the developer and then the taxpayers would have the ultimate opportunity.
And the architect that did the jail is an architect, I think, on the DuBois County project too. So I think Phil or somebody would probably have their contact information.
But it is new and then that's where some of the, and thank you for your question. It's very deserving. But that's some of the, unfortunately, that's some of the information that I cannot provide for you here today upon your question, sir.
As a governmental body, I don't, I don't understand here with this either. How can it, these say that there's no public bidding required? How, how does that work?
Because once you select the developer, he takes care of all that for you. He takes care of going out and getting the bids. He takes care of procuring all the materials and everything. You guys have given a price tag. You guys have given a scoping with all the requirements that you want on this project, all the way down to the site location, the amenities that's available to the site, upon to all the improvements that you want to put onto the site as far as representing the infrastructure of the new county highway department. You guys are in the driver's seat and all that. Once it's agreed and it's picked and price tag is done, it's his job to go out and bid all that, whether he wants to bid it locally, whether he wants to go into Kentucky and bid. That becomes all his job and in the coming, he worry of your guys is as long as through that bidding process, that he procures all the materials to the exact specifications and does all of the work during construction to the specifications that the B O T outlines that you guys require. That's where it leaves you in the driver's seat.
Yeah, and Joe, it's because this is part of a public-private partnership. So this, the B O T is a public-private partnership, which allows you a bit more flexibility without having to go through the public bidding process.
Thank you. Thank you, man.
Commissioners? Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions for him, but I, I do have some handouts here when Brian gets finished up that I want to
Okay.
touch on briefly.
Any other questions? All right, Brad, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you all for your time. I'm cutting this floor to be in the service and it's passing.
Thank you.
I do have some business cards. See if I have some business card after the meeting. Please poke them up and let me give you one.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioner, you want? Did you say you have some handouts to pass around?
Well, I'm going to try to warm up Rick as well as I've got some handouts here. He usually hands about three at a time. I only got one here for now. What you've got in front of you there is that the top where it says 85%, 15% is our current edit percentage breakdown. You've got an extra copy over there, I think I'm going to have to read off. Like I say, that's the current breakdown that it's been that way for several years. That right, Michelle? There is nothing set in stone that says by anyone that we can't adjust this to our liking. Right now, as you'll see, that 85% has been used in the past for asphalt paving. That's basically what it's used for. What we're proposing is a change from the 85, 15% to a 75, 25%. So if you go all the way down to the very bottom, and this is, we're talking about 2024 now for next year, if we made that change, that would still give the, if you look beside the 75%, it's a million 17,220. That still gives us a million dollars that would, could be utilized for paving. Go back up to the very top of the list, under 2023 where it says 85%, you can see it's a million 29,760. So we're only talking about, you know, 12, $12,000 there difference from the 85, 15% as it is this year compared to next year if we change it to 75, 25%. However, it will help us tremendously with the 25% at the very bottom, gives us almost $270,000 that could be utilized for a project such as this. Now, the project itself, I know there's a lot of unknowns. There are a lot of things that we're not familiar with. This is something new that the state has allowed counties and municipalities to do, to give them more flexibility and control and keep prices down. And I think one thing that has driven this, the state allowing, allowing us to do this is the fact that the last few years, good Lord, when you start talking about the prices, it's going up, you know, 12, 15, maybe 20% every year, it gets pretty scary. How in the world are you going to budget for something and try to plan and make wise use of the taxpayers' dollars when you don't know what the future holds when it comes to funding these projects? Because a project that you thought was going to be $3 billion ends up being five. So I honestly believe myself, in my opinion, that this is the reason that the states have allowed us to do things like this is because it really, it kind of speeds things up, speeds things up a little bit because, you know, there are just lots of uncertainties in the, in the future naturally. So this is what we would like to do and I would, I would like to do it here in the next few months. It's not going to hurt our paving, there's miles of asphalt or anything like that. So this is something that would give us a little more flexibility. And if, if we don't do this jail or if we don't do this highway department project, then, you know, so be it. I mean, the money will be there for other projects. So I just wanted to let you all know what our intentions were and give you something to think about there, but we would like to go ahead and move forward on this.
So Tom, that, that amount right now, the 15% right now, is that, I mean, are there ongoing expenses that we do then or are those new projects each year? The amount that you're looking at changing from 15% to 25% right now for the 2023 is a $112,000. So when we look at that increase, if we were to adjust that to 25% in 2024, it'd be $269,000. Is the full $269,000 available for a project such as this or is it the difference that's available for new projects?
Yes, it's available. Yes, if you would look above, it doesn't matter what year you look at or what percentage, we are committed to, have been committed to spending the required 93, $9,330 for River Hills and then the animal shelter and what we helped out with the growth partnership. Those are, those are the only three that we have committed to. To answer your question, yes, the 25% would be available.
So the full amount, not just the difference in the, from 23 to 24? Okay, full amount. Okay.
Yeah.
There are particular timeline that would be beneficial to you guys, of course, the next 30 days or 60 days.
Honestly, honestly, and I don't, I don't mean this to say to pressure anyone, but honestly, their yes time is pretty critical because of fuel tanks. The fuel tanks. And that, that was the, that was the driving force in this project. While I say that, but a lot of things have happened in the meantime. I don't think anybody ever in their wildest dreams thought that we would have such a traffic problem on Anson Street when Walmart and all those other businesses came in and I was out there two weeks ago at the highway department garage on one of those rainy days and Tiffany was sitting over in the corner and I asked her, why is she doing that? She said, well, roofs leaky right here where I normally sit. So, and we've just outgrown it. So yes, to answer your question, personally, I consider this very time sensitive.
One thing I'd like to add about the new facility, everybody focuses on the buildings and granted, all of that needs replaced. Everybody knows it's outdated. But the thing I come back to is efficiency. The highway department was designed, I think, in the late 50s, 60s, whatever it was. And I'll take like a rainy day, when you, there's just limited things you could do. We could use that time to stockpile rock. We don't have the place to put it right now. There's a lot of wasted time. We could be so much more efficient and I'll go to the salt buildings. We have two salt buildings, but what most people don't know, we're five days, five snow, snow days away from being out of material. We're not even in the ballpark of having the stockpile material we need. Like every year, five, six times a year, we're in panic mode because if we don't get a break at the end of that five days to refill, we're done. And nobody knows that. Everybody just thinks, ah, everything's going smooth. We're pretty good shape. We are this close to a crisis every time it snows. The one, two days, the one building is empty. And usually the third day, we'll get a break and we'll fill that building up. If we happen to get a second little burst of snow there, five days, you're out of material. And a five day snowstorm's not out of the question by any means.
So Rick, are you saying even just the size? Like if you were looking at a new site, you need
Volume, everything. I mean, everything we have is so compacted. I think we're around three and a half acres. If you put that at seven acres, we're out of room just because we're so compacted. There's stuff
Like if you were designed efficiently, seven acres would be adequate for what you have now, but to be able to stockpile, you need more than that.
Right. It, it wouldn't hurt. Seven, we could get by with that. Don't get me wrong. We could, that would be great. If it was bigger, that would be fine too. You know, there's, there's never an end to it. You could say 100 acres and I'd find something to put on it. But yes, I mean, at three and a half At three and a half acres, it's just, it's a joke really.
Idealistically, how many acres are you want or is this project looking to be on?
We've kind of, you're kind of guessing there to spread things out, the stuff stacked on top. I think somewhere between seven and 10 would be the ballpark we're looking for.
Have some sides picked up?
That would be the, be the process that would also have to be engaged by the developer. They would be responsible in finding that site that to your guys' liking and to your guys' qualifications. And please understand, I commend Rick what he said, everything he's saying is 100% accurate. But please understand this, if he has places for this to go, he's not ordering up salt in the middle in the middle of winter when these people take the price and they jack it up through the roof because they know that you need it. If he could procure that salt in like the middle of summer or in spring, have a place to go with it, not only is he being more efficient for the county, but look at the savings he's gonna be able to bring to the county over time, be able to procure that material at a time when it's much, much less instead of the middle of the winter because he doesn't have a place to keep it when supply's up, demand's up, supply automatically falls down whether they've got it or not, so you can bet the price is gonna go up as well. There's another opportunity there, is the savings, and at this level, no matter how small the government may be, anytime you can find the word savings, needs to be given some attention because savings means and stretches are bunching.
Yeah, and I would say in terms of a site, Preston, that's something that probably, it could be asked in advance, you know, there could be a call for sites, like, hey, this is what we're thinking right now, does anybody have land for sale, you know, or land available? Or do we locally have land that would be gifted to us or anything like that? So those are things that we can do ahead of time or as part of the R F I. I think, I think a lot of, I think there's some questions about land and making sure that it goes through a public process, it's due diligence, I think there's some questions there about the land for the particular project. So it's helpful, Rick, to hear from you what you actually need. So like how, how large does a site need to be? You know, do you have traffic issues now with Anson? We've heard that from Todd several times, is that something that's an issue? And do you have like an ideal spot of, like, what are some of those things that you're looking for?
We'd have to have something obviously centrally located in the county. You know, I can't be 10 miles out one direction, that makes it hard on everybody else. We have to be fairly centrally located, have to have an easy way to get on and off of the main roads, you know, with big trucks, snowplows. So those are the main, main issues.
The traffic is, just the business of the times that I frequent, the highway department, traffic in Anson Street is a, it's not only a concern, it's a safety concern, not only for the, say, county employees, but for the taxpayers.
Yeah, it's not a good line of sight either. Okay, any, any other questions?
It's my understanding you're getting ready to get a small apartment complex there in front of the existing highway department anyway, there next to the gas station.
That would be within the city, so we're not, we don't get.
But I'm saying it's gonna become more and more congested even more so.
Yeah, that would not surprise me. There's a lot of development on that side of town. Anything else?
I have one other comment. I failed to mention earlier, I don't know how many times I have to say this, but I've already said it twice, when this first come about at the council meeting I was at, I believe it was back in February when the highway department subject was first announced, we had no intentions of moving forward with this if we have to raise taxes. This will be the third time I've mentioned this, so I hope I, I hope I put this to rest today, I don't want to do this if we have to raise taxes. Do, yes.
That's good to know because I thought the council was raised.
Well, yeah, I want to point something out now. I don't want to give the impression by any means that we are flushed with money because we're not. This project, in getting an idea of what we think it's gonna cost, personally, I think we can afford it. It's a little tight. It depends on what the final price will be. Will it put us in a bind financially? I don't think so, or I wouldn't even be considering it. Now, there's a fine line between putting yourself in a bind and not knowing what the future holds, but I do know one thing for sure, or certain, that the prices for everything keep going up. So if we wait two or three or four years, then it'll be half and even more at least. So I think we owe it to the taxpayers, given the situation with our current situation with the traffic and the water and the fuel tanks, I don't know a better time to do this. Now, thanks to what Commissioner Marshall has done a couple of years, well, actually started about three or four years ago, and I know I said this once, I'll say it again, but you need to be reminded of the kind of work that he's putting in as the president and the commissioners, and thinking ahead a little bit and having the best interest of the county in mind, we refinanced the jail, Justice Center bond, and saved the county several hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Marshall spearheaded that. He also advised that we take some of our excess funds that were in the bank anyway, drawing little, nothing, and he suggested that we invest them. And we did that about a year, year and a half ago. And, and right now, for 2024, we are on target. Due to his efforts and Rick and to Mount Bugle, too, I agreed with it because I thought it was life. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna take in somewhere around $400,000 worth of interest, earned interest, next year. Now, that's not, that's over and above, that's just interest. Now, are we gonna have places to spend that properly? We've got an ambulance service that's struggling, we all know that. We're watching things very closely. Some of these things aren't getting better and they may get worse, but as long as we're on top of them, I think we can afford this, this project. And I hope it moves forward, and I hope you all do your homework, and I certainly don't want anyone to make a decision that goes against their conscience, but, and I know you have people to answer to, as we all do, but do your homework and make a decision based on that, and I will say this, I honestly think a project needs to be done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Todd. All right, Kyra, do you have anything? Okay, audience? Okay, we'll go around the, around the room. Karen, any comments? Preston? Okay, Todd? Rick? Phil?
No.
Bubba?
No, ma'am.
Gerald?
Appreciate the effort and the information process that we just had, I appreciate that.
Joe?
I'll be right back.
All right, well, I want to thank you all for your time, and thank you commissioners for having Brad come and talk more about the V O T process as, as you said, Todd, I think it's really important before we move forward with the project that everybody has all the information that they need, not only just so that people feel good about votes that are going to be made, but also because we want to save as much money as possible, we want to be efficient and effective with the use of our time. So thank you all. With that, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn the council meeting. Okay, I've got a motion on the floor from Bubba, second from Gerald, all those who favor, raise your right hand. All right, meeting adjourned.